Regular session, Monday, December 4th, 2023. For the Planning Commission in the chambers of City Hall. Michelle, would you be the recording secretary?
Yes.
Would you do the roll call, please?
The roll call, you just state your name.
Okay.
I'm Brian, I'm here, Brian Stevens.
Noah.
Sherri Hanson-Witson here.
Kathy Kim.
Mary Ann Nealon.
It seems that we have established a quorum. I need to have a motion on the approval of the minutes for November 6th of 2023.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
First, Brian's second and by Sherri's.
Yeah, I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. New business. Item number one, Dollar Tree, Leavenworth. Julie or Bethany, are you going to present it?
I'm going to be... So this will be Bethany presenting this one.
Pardon?
This will be Bethany.
Okay, good deal, thanks Bethany.
So the subject property is at 2017 South Fourth Street. It's owned by Great Western Manufacturing Company. The plat was prepared by Own Inc. The applicant is requesting approval of a one lot final plat for the Dollar Tree Leavenworth subdivision. As you'll see from the plat, it's a portion... Oh, there's a vicinity map in your packet. It's only a portion of the lot, of the Great Western lot. It's 1.53 acres. The entire lot is 6.87 acres. The property is zoned GBD, General Business District. It's currently only used for parking right now. Otherwise, it's a vacant lot. The plat was reviewed at the November 16th Development Review Committee. All comments had been addressed by, at that time, staff recommends approval of the Dollar Tree Leavenworth subdivision final plat. And I believe the engineers are here for questions.
Do we have any, do we have any questions? We can open it up to the floor.
It's not a public hearing, no.
It's not a public hearing, so it's...
Yep, so just discussion amongst the board and any questions for staff or the engineer if you have them. Otherwise, you can proceed with a motion.
This is, just for my clarification, this is already done? This is just signing off on what they finally did?
Yep, so you are...
This isn't changing anything?
Nope, so the, up here, the Great Western property is on one lot. There's the Great Western building and then to the north of it, it's kind of an open field area that is more on the level of Tire Town. Looks like it's more part of Tire Town when you drive by. They sometimes park there, like there's some semis parked there in the aerial. And so just a portion of that is being split off. The Great Western property is not currently platted. It's all just one part parcel. And so Dollar Tree is basically purchasing that unused portion up there from Great Western. And so they're just plating that lot so then they can move forward with the development.
Okay. And, and Great Western don't say, is that a private road back there? Or is that just a driveway for Great Western?
It, this, that's on city property. This is the animal control facility back here. And this is just, I've never driven back here. It kind of goes up to the wastewater treatment facility. But that's not on the Great Western property.
Oh yeah?
It's not right away.
I didn't know that was a road there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not right away.
Yeah, I knew that's a road there, but that's not, that's part of Great Western's property.
Nope, that's not on their property.
Is this part of...
No, but this is Great Western's property where all the trucks are behind. I mean, the part of Tire Town's property, right behind, that's what it says.
Yeah, that's, yeah, Tire Town owns that. So that's not part of this plat. And it's just a portion of this open area up here.
I understand.
Is this a new store or part of the chain just expanding?
It'd just be a new Dollar Tree building.
Okay, it's not replacing another one?
No.
Now, Dollar, Dollar Tree is, is versed with Family Dollar, haven't they?
I'm not sure. There's a newish Dollar Tree out at about 10th and Eisenhower. But as far as we know, it's not replacing the Dollar General or Family Dollar.
Is there, is there anyone here for Dollar?
Dollar Tree?
Yeah.
Yes, at 10th and Eisenhower.
No, is there anyone here who...
Yes, the engineers are... Oh, sorry.
Oh, just the engineer.
Is that correct, that Dollar Tree and Family Dollar are...
Yes, they are under the same...
Can you please...
Thank you.
My name is Alex Gusterston, I'm the engineer over here for this project.
Okay.
Family Dollar and Dollar Tree are owned by the same overall entity. The stores they open are different. Family Dollars are tailored more for like a Dollar General store, like one shop for all your home goods needs. Dollar Trees are geared more for retail, you know, birthday items, things that you see at the dollar store. And they just tailor to different markets based on what store their, their market research and use of.
I thought they were both, I saw one building and I forget where, I found they had Dollar Tree and...
Yes, sir, they do have combination stores as well.
Will this be one of the new ones with the fresh vegetable option, fresh fruits and vegetables?
This is not one of the Dollar Tree marketplaces. That's rolling out in coming years here.
This is like the one at 10th and Eisenhower? Okay. Any other questions?
What's the, I guess I do have it, what's the ETA on it?
Where we sit at right now, if this proceeds forward, construction would be completed about mid next year. They should be open by June.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And there was nothing from the city as far as traffic considerations?
Nope, so site plan is completely separate and that's been reviewed by staff as well. And so any of that would be addressed at the time of building permit. But no, there's no traffic study needed or anything like that.
Yeah, because I mean, it's obviously a busy area. And I know, you know, turning left out of Tire Town, trying to go south on Fourth Street is something I don't think many people try to do.
Not many of them try to turn left coming on a Price Chopper on Fourth Street.
Right, and that sign has gone back and forth between being known. But, so the, the city doesn't think that there's anything that needs to be...
Correct, not with the size of the store and the expected traffic volume.
Okay.
Anybody else got any questions?
No.
So what you want us to do is say that we approve this?
You need to call for a motion.
Okay, need a motion to approve this plat?
Thank you.
Final plat.
Thank you very much. Need a motion for the approval of this plat?
I'll do a motion to approve the final plat for the Dollar Tree Leavenworth case number 2023-34 sub. Dollar Tree, is that correct?
Yes.
To move forward.
I'll second that.
First, Sherri, and a second by Kim.
Okay, and then?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Nay, I, I vote nay.
And 1-0, and motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna skip item two?
No, so go ahead and call for item number two in that.
Okay, item number two, conduct a public hearing for case number 2023-30, text for proposed text amendments to be adopted by 216 Development Regulations.
Yep, so this item is being continued to the January 8th, 2024 meeting. Just at the request of staff to provide additional time to make those amendments. And so you will see that at the January meeting. There's no action needed from the board.
Okay, thank you. And now we go to old business. This is a relook at 2023-28, 1913 Choctaw Street. Public hearing for, was conducted November 6th, the Planning Commission meeting. And the vote was tabled to the December 4th, 2023 Planning Commission. Requested, requested additional information. Applicants and owners are requesting special use permit to allow for the operation of a childcare center for seven or more children in their home located at 1913 Choctaw Street. The property is currently zoned R19, medium density, single-family residential district. Childcare centers are allowed in 9, R19 zoning district with issuance of a special use permit.
Okay, thank you. So as you said, this item was continued from the November 6th Planning Commission meeting at the request of the board for staff to provide some additional information. Just a quick recap, as you said, the applicants are requesting a special use permit to operate a childcare center in their home located at 1913 Choctaw Street. They are licensed by the state of Kansas to care for a maximum of 12 children. Currently, they have eight kids enrolled in the daycare at this time. The applicant had previously had a home daycare since 2020 at their prior residence in Leavenworth. They indicated that they were unaware that there is a city requirement for a special use permit to operate that daycare. They had been licensed by the state of Kansas for that daycare though. When staff was notified by a neighbor in August that they had started daycare at 1913 Choctaw after they moved, we contacted the county office that does the daycare licensing for the state here in Leavenworth just to make sure that they were licensed before we would have contacted them to send out a notice of violation, which is our standard procedure if we're notified of a business that's operating without a special use permit. After we contacted the county office, they apparently contacted the owners to let them know. And so the owners contacted us within a day before we had a chance to send out a notice of violation. So there was never actually any violation issued for this property because they contacted us before we had a chance to do that. And then they immediately began the steps to submit their application and get in the process for the special use permit. During the November 6th Planning Commission meeting, staff was asked by the board to provide data that was generated by a speed survey that was currently underway by the police department, as well as information regarding property values for nearby homes of existing home daycares in the city and then potential signage or other traffic calming measures for the area. So based on those requests, we've got some more information here that I'll go over. And we also have the police chief and public works director here as well so they can speak a little further to some of these things. In regards to the speed survey, at the request of the neighbors prior to the Planning Commission, the Leavenworth Police Department had installed a stealth radar device at the intersection of 19th and Choctaw to record the vehicle count and speed for a two-week period. That data was collected from November 1st through November 15th. I've provided the full report in your policy report, but just sort of the, the main results, I'll go through those. So the posted speed limit of the area is 30 miles per hour. During the time that they were doing the count, there were a total of 2,722 vehicles that were counted. The number, the percentage of vehicles under the speed limit was 96.88%. The average speed of those vehicles was 21.46 miles an hour, so pretty well under the posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour. And then of the vehicles that were recorded as being over the speed limit, the average speed violation was 33.99 miles per hour. So about four miles per hour over the posted speed limit. During the speed survey, there was one vehicle that was registered as going over the designated excessive speed threshold, which is set as 55 miles per hour. That time of recording was done between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM, which is outside of the daycare business hours. The daycare owner has provided us with her sign-in and sign-out log sheets for the time period of this survey. And during the time period, there were no kids that were picked up outside of that, kind of as a one-off thing. So that excessive speed would not have been a daycare patron. So just given the lack of data suggesting that there were any speed or traffic volume issues, there would be no traffic calming measures indicated for the area. And then regarding the property values surrounding existing home daycares, there are currently 15 active special use permits for home daycares within the city of Leavenworth. So just to take a look at the, the property values, what's posted on the county appraiser's website are the property value increases from 22 to 23. So we took a look at the immediately surrounding eight to 10 properties, kind of just in that immediate radius of just a random sample of nine of those existing home daycares. And so for the 22 to 23 period, the average property value increase for those surrounding homes around the existing daycares was 15.36%. The average property value increase for Leavenworth County during the same time period was 14.85% per the appraiser's office, so pretty in line with the rest of the county. So I will go through the conditions of determination for a special use permit. We have a few specific to home, to home daycares. The first is that it shall not be located along an arterial street as designated on the major street map unless indirect vehicular access to that street, such as what the frontage road is available. The property is located on Choctaw Street, which is designated as a residential street. The second is that it shall provide at least 100 square feet of open space per child and that space shall be 100% enclosed by a minimum, minimum of four-foot-high fence or wall. Backyard area of the property is completely enclosed by an approximately four-foot-high chain-link fence with a four-foot-high wooden privacy fence that was installed by the applicants to divide the yard into two areas. One, half of that just for exclusive use of the daycare. The portion of the yard established for use by the daycare clients is approximately 2,000 square feet. Staff did go out to take measurements of the fence because there were some concerns brought up about that. So the chain-link fence existed prior to the applicants purchasing the property. There are a few areas where it appears to be slightly lower than four feet by up to about four inches. We don't even have record of a fence permit, so it's probably fairly old. That fence is so settling, can't take place.
Is, may I ask a question about that? Is the fence height only in the city ordinance? Or is it also in the state guidelines?
I, it's my understanding that that is one of the state requirements as well. And I would just note that the state has inspected the property and passed it on all of their requirements. But it's my understanding that that's part of their requirement as well.
Okay.
So the wooden portion of the fence that kind of splits the yard is four feet or higher by a couple of inches in all areas. The third is that they shall provide a loading zone capable of accommodating at least two vehicles for easy pickup and discharge of passengers. The property does have a driveway that's capable of accommodating up to four cars. The fourth is that they shall conform to all requirements of the state of Kansas and shall acquire a state of Kansas childcare license. So again, the applicants have provided a copy of their group daycare home permit from the state. And the KDHE staff again has visited and inspected the daycare for all areas of compliance with their regulations. The fifth is that all childcare centers operated in residential zoning districts shall be the only legal residence of the operator. This home does function as the only residence of the owner and operator. And the sixth is that childcare centers in residential districts may have one non-illuminated monument sign with no more than three square feet per side and a maximum of two sides. Or one non-illuminated sign affixed to the main structure of three square feet. They don't currently have any signage, but any signage displayed would need to conform with those regulations. So then just moving on to the findings required in general for special use permits. The first is that the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of the ordinance. Staff does believe that the application complies or will comply with all provisions of the ordinance based upon all available materials provided to staff. Second is that the proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare or convenience of the public. Childcare centers are an essential service to working parents in the community and do promote the economic development, welfare and convenience of the public through providing that service. The third is that the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff has no indication that the proposed childcare center will cause any substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood based upon data that is available. And the fourth is that the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. There are no new structures or building modifications proposed as part of the special use permit. And the property will continue to look and function as a residential structure. The daycare could account for an increase in up to 48 car trips per day when they're at full capacity of 12 kids in the daycare. So a notification was sent to property owners within 200 feet of the property as required by Kansas statute. After those notifications were first mailed, staff did receive one inquiry from a notified property owner indicating that they were not in favor of this special use permit request. During the November 6th Planning Commission meeting, as you'll recall, there were multiple individuals that spoke both in favor of and in opposition to the special use permit request. Since the November 6th Planning Commission meeting, staff has received four letters in support of the special use permit. So as I said, we do have the police chief and public works director here. Before we hear from the applicants, I would suggest that we go ahead and have the police chief speak. I know we had some information that we wanted to elaborate on regarding the speed study and other traffic conditions that are out there.
Okay, do we, first of all, do we have any questions from the board before we have the police chief speak? And then, any questions?
No.
Okay, then we'll, then we'll open up the floor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patrick Kitchens, I'm the chief of police of the Leavenworth Police Department. Pleased to be here this evening. So as I understand it, I think the basic question that was asked of the police department as related to this was is there a speeding problem in that particular neighborhood? And so I think some of the, one particular neighbor has had quite a bit of contact with our traffic supervisor Sergeant Brandon Mance. And so this has been ongoing semi, but separate from the, this process. So when we get that question, there is a very specific process that we use to evaluate it. We don't just make decisions on people complaining or that some sense, that something needs to be done. We have a very specific process that we follow and that has three components that I'd like to talk about very briefly. Number one is that there's a state statute that requires us to conduct a traffic investigation and engineering study if we're going to consider making changes to the speed limit, okay? We don't just have the ability to wake up one day and say, we think something needs to be done, let's make some changes. We have a very specific process and that's governed by the state statute. And so as part of this entire process, we also have the ability to answer our questions from the community about this because this is a common practice that we get. Hey, chief, I think there's a lot of speeding in our neighborhood, can you help us, right? So we have this technology and so we use that to make a decision. So I'm going to speak about one particular part of it that's very important and that's the percentage of people that were measured. So 97% of the people that were measured in that speed study were traveling at or below the speed limit, okay? That's important because the criteria established to make any changes would be 85%. So that means that in order for us to consider making some kind of change or modification, we would need to have somewhere less than 85% of the people traveling in that roadway to be traveling speeding, okay? And in this case, 97%, almost 100% of the people are at or below the speed limit and the people that were above are at a very small range. So that component would not, you know, allow us to move forward. The second part of that component is traffic accidents. Let's say that we decided, you know, even though there's not a lot of speeding, there's a lot of traffic accidents. And so what's the traffic accident data? From January 1st of 2022 until today, there had been no traffic accidents in that neighborhood. So the second component of that was not eligible for us to take action. And then the final component in the statute, it allows us to make a judgment. Even still, if there's no speeding or there's a lot of, a lot of traffic accidents, can we still come up with some judgment? And in my experience and consultation with Mr. Faust, there is nothing that would indicate that there's some unique circumstance that exists that would require us to do that. So the answer to the question, is there a speeding problem in that neighborhood that would warrant us taking action? The answer to that question is no. I will take that one step further. I wish that all the neighborhoods in the city of Leavenworth had this data because I can tell you it doesn't. There are a number of locations that are far, far worse than this in terms of speeding and traffic accidents that take up quite a bit of our resources. And so that's my presentation this evening. I'll answer whatever questions that you might have to help you come up with your decision.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
I do have one, one question. Does the statute or just your local protocol define how long the study is? Is the two-week timeframe a recommendation from your office or is that something in the statute?
So that is in combination with our experiences. The four-day window, 14-day window really kind of gives us the best sense of what's really going on in that neighborhood. No is the answer. But that also comes in consultation with the manufacturer of the technology. They're saying, hey, this is generally speaking where you want to target. That's going to give you your best guess, best estimation of what's going on in the neighborhood.
And, and they do this by hours, like morning hours compared to evening hours compared to the middle of the...
It will tell you every hour, every single hour of all 24 hours of the time that it's out there. It's quite sophisticated and quite helpful. This is not an uncommon experience, we get this question quite a bit. We have two of them, they're out all the time. And, you know, we're constantly evaluating the information, trying to make the best guess about whether we need to do something.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Can they, the people of the neighborhood, request that it be done again at some time? Because the fact of the matter is that it was in place, then we all met here and they did say we're going to talk to the daycare parents, which is very nice. And they apparently did, and they all lowered their speed. So the fact of the matter is that a few days into this survey, the parents weren't warned not to speed on the street anymore and they're being very nice about it and they did lower their speed. But what if that picks up again?
So the answer to your question, can we put it back out there? Sure, we can absolutely do that. It's easy to put up and it's easy to put down. My experience is to your point about people knowing that it's out there, we have that similar complaint as well. If you did not know it was up there, you're not going to know that it's collecting data. And I would, I wouldn't argue, hold on, I wouldn't argue that sure, a few people probably lowered their speed limit. But quite honestly, my experience is with people that are driving is sure for a day or two, maybe three or four days. But after that, they return to their normal routine, driving behavior and pattern, which is that if they're going to speed, they're going to speed. And so I, I don't like the word stated fact that you used. I just, I have a different experience than that.
I just wondered because they, they did say they were going to talk to them and they, clearly they did it and they lowered their speed, which is nice.
But we can absolutely assess this, you know, anytime, it's easy to take up and put down. And so, you know, that would be the, the recommendation, we could do that in a few months, see how things are settling in.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
And I don't know if the public works director had anything he wanted to add. Brian?
Good evening. Actually, just echoing what the chief said, based on the data, we would not be supporting a change in speed or gas economy.
Or speed bumps or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Okay. So just to kind of finish the staff report, staff does recommend approval of the special use permit request based on the analysis that's provided in the policy report, subject to four conditions that we've provided. The first is that a minimum of 1,200 square feet of open space, 100% enclosed by a minimum of four-foot-high fence or wall be provided and maintained in good condition. The second is that a copy of the permanent group daycare home license be provided annually upon renewal by the state of Kansas. The third is that the operation be limited to a maximum of 12 children. And the fourth is that no additional home occupations may be carried out at the residence. And then just failure to maintain compliance with all of those conditions would result in revocation of the special use permit. So just to kind of remind everyone, the public hearing for this item was conducted at the November 6th Planning Commission meeting. So tonight is not a public hearing. I know there are a number of people in the audience who probably want to speak to this item. So at the board's discretion, you can allow a public comment if you would like to take that. I would suggest, based on the length of public comment at the last meeting, there was a lot of concerns and information provided at that time with some fairly long comments provided by speakers. So we would suggest, just out of respect for everyone's time, that any comments be limited to five minutes and be limited to any new information or concerns that were not presented at the last meeting since all of those have been heard and entered into the record. That is standard with city commission meetings, they actually limit speakers to three minutes. And so, just to kind of help keep on track, I'll do what our city manager does, and I can also set a timer on my phone for five minutes with any speakers, so we can just kind of keep things moving along. So, before you decide if you want to take any public comments, I would go ahead and suggest that you have the applicants provide any information or comment that they would like to.
Do we, the advocates?
Yep.
Would you answer some questions for us? State your name again, please.
Vanessa Jerry Jackson.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions?
I, how were the discussions with the parents when you let them know of this, of this issue, and asked them to slow down and, and all of that? How did that conversation go, and have you noticed any differences yourselves since the la, the last meeting?
Yeah, we talked to them, and they all understood the concerns of all the neighbors. And so, they all respectfully, just like, alright, we'll, we'll watch our speed limit a little closer, watch how we win and we drop off and where we park.
Have any neighbors come to you to complain about parking or traffic volume or anything?
The neighbor directly to the left of us, Ron and Luanne, they, we had one parent kind of, kind of parked a little bit in front of the driveway one day, and they came over and talked to us, and we talked to them, and now we have a little road, we actually bought a little road cone
Okay.
that we stick out, and we say, don't park behind this cone, out of respect to our neighbors. And they understood completely, so it hasn't happened since.
I put it out in the morning, I put it, I take it back in, I put it out in the afternoon, and it's been fine.
Okay. That's all my questions, Brian.
Do you have any, do you have a question, Mary Ann?
No.
I have a, I have a question. You have seven children?
We have eight.
Eight children? How come you only have one bathroom? That concerns me. One bathroom, you have a daycare area, you have a sunroom, you got 20, 720 square feet, I guess, a play area or whatever, but there's, according to your plot plan, or your, you only have one bathroom. That seems a...
I have one, one kid who's fully potty trained, I have one kid who's in the process of being potty trained. It's not a busy area.
But is it going to stay that way?
Have you, have you been, have you been inspected by the state of Kansas?
Yeah.
Has the state of Kansas say, they said that you operate lawfully?
We only need one bathroom.
Okay. And bathrooms are included in that inspection?
So, so, does that mean that you can only go up to a certain age on your daycare?
I'm licensed to be, from anywhere from, I think, six weeks to 11 years old.
And if anybody over five is in school?
Yeah.
Yeah, the state, the license is in your packet, and that outlines the ratio of ages of kids that are allowed. And that ratio is based on the ages of kids in daycare, and the state has that very clearly lined out and defined in their license.
Okay.
I believe it's, she'll know more than I do, but, because you have another baby coming, not you personally, but one of the mothers spoke that she's having a baby, and you're going to have that baby. Isn't that the way it works? The younger the kid, the less children you can have in your daycare? So even though you're allowed to have up to 12, not if the ages are...
Yeah, we don't, we don't have 12.
We'll never have 12. If you have an infant, knocks your maximum down like nine.
Yeah.
Another infant's eight, so.
So they reserve the space for that other mother, therefore they can't go to 12.
Thank you for answering that for me. Anybody else have any other questions? So I guess I need a, thank you very much. I guess I need a motion.
Um, yeah, so if you, yeah, if you, yeah, if you want to take any, again, comment from the audience, again, it's not a public hearing, but there are a number of people here, so if you would like to take comments, and then if there's any additional discussion or questions from the board.
We, we would appreciate that if anybody would like to get up and speak again.
Then I would just say, if anybody does speak, we had a sign-in sheet at the back for folks to sign in. If you did not do that, if you could sign in at the podium, because we do have to record those names and addresses.
And we'll keep it five minutes.
Yep, five minutes.
Five minutes.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Varvel. I am a parent of a student that, or a child that goes to Ms. Nessa's daycare. And since I have limited time, I'm just going to provide you guys this information to have. But one of the things that I noticed at the last here, or the public hearing, was that there was a big emphasis on, do we even need daycares in Leavenworth? So, I'm going to give this to you guys and then quickly brief through it. So, within that packet, I did some research of our area and was able to find that not only is there a need for daycare in our area, there's a huge need for daycare in our state. We are actually looking, call it daycare desert. And so, in my packet, you'll see there's maps of Leavenworth, as well as zoomed in to the area which Vanessa and Jerry live. And then I also have information showing the state in general. The Kansas City Star actually reported on it this year. Just in the state of Kansas, there's over 84,000 kids in state of Kansas alone that don't have daycare, there's not enough slots open. When I looked in our area alone, so in the area that Ms. Nessa's house exists in, there are 444 children under the age of five that need daycare, only, there's only 184 slots available. So there's definitely a need in this area for that daycare to exist. I also looked at Child Care Aware of Kansas, did a study, and of that study, it showed that there were also a lack of daycare openings. According to that study, there were approximately 1,800 children under the age of six that needed daycare that were not able to find that daycare. Personally, out of my own experience, I happened to be able to just, under the grace of God, be able to get Ms. Nessa. I work for the school district, and so some of our other school district employees work and also go to Ms. Nessa's daycare. So they all talked amazing things, so I definitely looked into her, and like, by the skin of my teeth got in, but I was starting to sweat bullets. There was not a lot of daycares available in our area, and in fact, I was looking at having to actually go to places like Platt City or Atchison to drop my kid off, to then come back to work, then go get my kid. So there's definitely a need, and that is huge for our recruitment piece, for our school district even, of just, is there daycare available for our kids? So, I would, I strongly advise that you take that information into account when you look at approving that special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No questions, thank you very much.
Thank you for putting this together, this is great information. Yes, sir.
I'll keep it to five minutes.
Okay.
And I'm not going to stay on the appraisals very long. We, we've been tracking appraisals in about two blocks of Choctaw, and in fact, 30 properties around the city for 15 years. And I know a little bit about appraisals and how it's worked at that time in the state and in the county. And by, by the way, our two, our two blocks of Choctaw during this time period, 2022 to '23, they went up 15.17%. It was a 15% standard application across the city, first time ever that that's happened. And what would change it would be recent sales, generally up. So, that may have missed the mark as far as what we're doing, because it's about our particular neighborhood. Since it came up, and I'm really glad the chief was here, I guess, yeah, okay. I'm glad he's here, because he could explain what the traffic study was all about. When I got Sergeant Mance back on 5th of September, took a ride around, sent our house, an hour code, you, we appreciated it. Got moved up, it took two, two months to get the equipment up, so much in demand. Well, I understood some things, and one thing I understood at the end was, we may get speed limit reduced, we may not, but we would possibly have a stop sign up at the intersection where that T is. That would be helpful. I don't know where we're at in this whole process now.
If we could just keep you directed up here, so we catch your comments for the record.
Just into the microphone.
Yeah, 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 into the microphone.
Okay, I don't know where we're at. Anyway, the, the speed study, since it came up, the summary was, given the lack of data suggesting speeding or traffic volume issues, lack of data might have been a Freudian slip. I want to have you look in your packet at the speed study and point out something, and if I had it clarified by the chief. If you go to the, well, the summary part, the summary page, it had the inbound and the outbound traffic. There's a 310 difference between inbound and outbound. Apparently, there are magical cars that are appearing and go outbound to add to that count. I don't know if that's radar being, that's in, in work, or, or what could be going on. We'll move past that. If you look on the, the distribution chart by hours, I'm just going to point to the 07 to 7:59 hour. This is the count for the entire...
Where are you at, sir? Oh, okay.
I'll let y'all catch it.
I got it, I got you, thank you.
That count for the entire 14-day period, the total number of cars coming in, going out, is what?
Zero.
It's zero. And that is impossible. And when we saw this, because I was not being blunt, it's a confirmation ahead of you guys, I had to see the packet, and we're trying to figure out what's going on, so I can do something if necessary about it. There's something that is wrong about this report. I don't know how the data were logged, but I know how this report gets brought off of the stealth equipment, and it could be that something happened as far as the, the data reporting part of it. I don't know, but you cannot have zero as a count in the 7 to 7:59 hour, and if you were looking at this one excessive speed out that hour, why did you not notice here, when she opens up, that there are no cars in those two weeks? Impossible, I know it's not true. And even the next hour, 37 total, there's something wrong. And we did go to daylight savings time in this period, but I don't know how, I don't know how that could affect this coming off of the measured, recorded data on the machine, and then being they're unloaded into this report. And I know you can set it up for hours and you do not have it collected, and there's some discrimination of vehicles and these sorts of things, but there's something wrong right there. And Chief, I don't know. How do you get a zero?
Speak into the microphone, would you please?
Chief, I don't know, how do you get a zero? When I saw vehicles in those times, I know you've had people set, I mean, we know that, so something is not correct about that. I don't know if it's an hour shift that that needs to be done.
So I don't want you to run out of time, so you've stated that point, can we have another one?
Okay, and there's a day-by-day pattern that you can also drop out, there's no day-by-day, so we don't see the weekend taken out.
Other than the, oh, sorry, I was trying to save you time.
Yep, that's the five minutes.
Mary Ann's point exactly, though, we don't really see the morning and separate out who's what day. The Monday-Friday is what we were talking about.
What story does this data not tell?
Well, we don't know.
It's messy.
There can't be zero at 7 to 8 o'clock.
But, I'm asking you, what is your subjective experience that isn't represented in this data? Because we, we've got 95% compliance, or whatever, whatever it is, we're not looking at a margin of like 40%, so, so that, you know, if we missed an entire hour, that it would throw off the result, the results, this is a huge sample size, you're...
What's the difference between the inbound and outbound? That's 310.
No, 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 but the overall results of the data, how is it different than what you experience as a human?
I experienced the 48 cars every day, or 32 right now, or whatever. I experienced all them passing in front of my face, because I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac. So I don't know what this is going to record all the way up and down. It seems, it seems like it could be right, but not for those hours.
Okay, so not for those hours, but you think it captured, with the exception of those zeros, you think it captured the, the traffic volume?
Why would I, why would I think that's correct, though? I see that's not right. So is it a matter of the time being a shift in the reporting and producing that report?
I mean, I don't, I don't think there's...
Yep, so I, we'll let chief speak to how the data is collected, he's familiar with the equipment.
If somebody parks in front of this center, I mean, I...
Yeah.
No, not for two weeks, Brian, no. We're not standing for that. This is not correct right there, and if it's a two-hour shift, then we're capturing the right picture.
But the difference is, this is not hinging on the traffic study. There is, there is nothing...
This has nothing to do with you and the special use permit, but it's been brought into this, and there's something wrong about it, and it was part of how she's saying, oh, this one out here, at that time, it couldn't have been. Well, we don't know what time that is.
Unless you can present objective evidence.
I couldn't get contact with them to even find out what had happened.
If you can't present any objective evidence, we have to go with the evidence that we have, and we have to look at, we're only talking about a special use permit, we have no authority to do anything else.
I was bringing it up, because you co-opted this, and I want to know why you're not seeing at 7 to 8, there were no cars counted. That can't be, something's wrong with the study.
Yep, so I think that point's been made, so we'll let chief speak to how the data is collected.
Yep. Do we want to have chief? Chief, do you have anything to add?
I'm not prepared to answer the questions, I don't know what the question is. I stand by the study. If there's specific questions or he has issues with that, in my opinion, it's not relevant to this tonight. You asked us what the question was, I answered the question for you. I'm telling you, in my opinion, of 33 years of experience, a review of that data and traffic accidents, the question was, is there a speeding problem in the neighborhood? The answer to that question is no, and that's unequivocal.
And my question is, why were there zero cars counted in 7 to 8?
We, we understand what your question is, and, but...
It casts doubt on what we're looking at. I'm trying to figure it out in my head, and also the 300-car discrepancy between inbound and outbound. How did they magically appear in the neighborhood?
So I think those concerns have been noted for the record, and we'll just ask that we move on to try and keep the speakers moving.
And we appreciate you bringing that up to us, very much. I would suggest maybe if the chief would talk to you and maybe answer some of those questions that as best he can, if he would like, if he would do that, I think that's fine. But, all we can go by is what we, what we have, and your, your opinion is so many in, and then that, or more went out than came in, you know?
I understand, it was, hey, look, here we go again.
No, wait a minute, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. I think that, that, we appreciate what you've, what you gave us, and this is a study that they did, they, they did not say anything about stop signs or anything like that, which you, which you brought up, and that's fine, and I think maybe rather than how many cars came in and out, maybe at that T, you should have a yield sign or a stop sign, maybe, maybe the neighborhood should, wait, maybe the neighborhood should go to that point to the city.
And that was discussed in the parallel path with Sergeant Mance from the beginning, and that's why I brought it up and told you what we've been doing.
Yep, and so that's not a part of this consideration tonight?
That's not part of our, of our situation.
I understand that.
So, all we can go by is what we got in the study.
It didn't, I didn't mean for it to get wrapped into this process, but it did, because y'all got it and put it in, and that data cannot be true.
And that was because of the request of Mr. Ingram at the last meeting. And so, I, I would just suggest that Mr. Ingram get back in touch with Sergeant Mance, since he was his initial point of contact at the police station. If he's got specific questions about the study. It was requested by the neighbors, Mr. Ingram in particular, and the board at the last meeting that we provide this data. That's what we've done to help the board make their decision, and so, again, I think those concerns have been noted, and so I'd just suggest that we move on to the next speaker.
Right. And if I can make a point of clarification, this, this commission did not ask for the study to be done.
Correct.
We heard that there might be a study, and we asked that it be tabled, or I asked that it be tables, so that we could have that information, but this data is being presented not as part of this special use permit, just as additional information for us to consider as a board, so that we can make a decision. This is not part of this special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time. Do we have anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
John Ingram, 1908 Choctaw, and once again, I'll be briefer. We noticed immediately when the stealth... We noticed immediately when the stealth radar went up that it was, must have been obvious because it had slowly dropped. But by the time that the last planning meeting happened, the next day, it just dropped immediately. So, it was obvious that Vanessa had talked to the parents and that they were coming in my cellar, and it has continued. So, on that part, we're really grateful for that, that that's happened. It's made it much more pleasant to look out a front window and not see them coming in at that speed. The parking has been better. The cone has really helped, so we do appreciate that. But both my husband and I are data-driven.
Or what? I'm sorry.
Data-driven.
Okay.
That's our backgrounds. So, when we see something that doesn't make sense, we pretty much can't let it go because if there's bad data, then you don't know what you're looking at. So, that was really his concern. But what I wanted to say was, we've heard a lot about daycare, and I, I've looked at all the statistics too. Statistics can be tricky because a lot of that is about potential need of daycare. And we're not here to say, we weren't really here to talk about daycare. We were concerned that there was a business operating in the neighborhood that was causing a difference in traffic, and we wanted to see that addressed. And that, that was our main concern. But if daycare is an issue here, I would think that in the city connection, that something should be put in there about daycare and the need for a special use permit. There's lots about massage therapists, and it's in there like every other time. And I don't really think that needs to be in there as much, but perhaps something about daycare could be put in there if we think we need daycare and let people know what they need to do to provide it. And that would probably be helpful. We might get in on the front end of this process instead of the back end, like I had said in the last meeting. Because really, that, we have been more concerned about the process, not the fact that there is a daycare in our neighborhood. And I wanted to make that clear, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Claude Collins, and I live at nineteen twenty Second Avenue. And I was there at the last meeting, and I'd like to address some things that was mentioned. And even tonight, all this traffic before the daycare parents were talked to, they were going fifty miles an hour. Where did that, where did that come from? I have a motorcycle that flies by my house, sometimes at eighty-eight, sometimes at ninety-two miles an hour. How do I know? I'm guessing. I was over at Jerry and Vanessa's house Thursday, and for, last Thursday for Thanksgiving, that night when I was leaving, I was driving south on Nineteenth. I did get up to thirty miles per hour, and I thought it was too fast. I normally probably drive twenty. If I'm out on the sidewalk, somebody's driving thirty, I'm going to be going, they need to slow down. They're probably going fifty miles an hour. So, we're basing fifty miles an hour that everybody's driving based on people's visualization, you know? As far as the daycare, anybody can have a home daycare, up to six kids. They're licensed for twelve. For them to have twelve kids, three of them have to be over the age of five. They can only have five, under five, have a max of nine. And that, and talking to Jerry and Vanessa, they don't watch school-age kids. So, basically, the max they're going to have is nine. With the permit. Without the permit, they're going to have six. So, you're talking three extra vehicles, an extra twelve per day going down Nineteenth Street. And that's the other thing. Nineteenth Street is owned by the public. It's not owned by the residents of that community. They said it tonight. They said it. Our community, my neighborhood, you know? Well, that's my street too. That's my sidewalk. If I want to dig out my saxophone and go play it on Nineteenth Street, I can. It's a public sidewalk. As far as walking on the street, that's against the law. Somebody said it wasn't last meeting. It's the Kansas statute, the twenty twenty-three standard traffic ordinance, section sixty-eight, paragraph A. If there's a sidewalk, a vaivah, it shall be unoffer to walk in the roadway. You know, so they're like, they think that that should be their private street, and it's not. I used to drive up my motorcycle up and down that street every weekend at about eleven-thirty at night, driving home from work. I had a restricted permit. I could only drive to school and back and working back. So, I took the scenic route on, on my way home because I didn't want to, I wanted to go cruising. And chances of a police officer behind a dead-end street's very slim. You know, next spring, if the motorcycle club wants to take a scenic route on the rail, Highway ninety-two, and fifty Harley-Davidsons want to drive up Nineteenth Street and back down, they can. It's a public street. It's not owned by the neighbors. I do understand where they're coming from. You know, if I bought a house on a dead-end street, I'd be like, ah, no traffic, very litter, you know? But basically, it's only three extra vehicles. The night of the last meeting, I happened to look at Realtor.com. There was a house pending in the eighteen-hundred block of Choctaw. Who's to say that they wasn't going to open up a home daycare for six kids? The next house that goes up for sale, I told me and my wife, we're going to buy it, and we're going to open up a home daycare. No special use permit needed. The next house, I'm buying it, and I'm only going to rent it to somebody that's going to open up a home daycare. There ain't nothing that their community can do about that. So, that's, I had a lot more stuff, but we're on with it tonight.
Appreciate it.
So, that is it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does the board have any discussion that they would like to say at this time, Brian?
I have, I have just a, a few, you know, so what we're, I, I just want to remind everybody, we're talking about a special use permit to open a home daycare. We're not talking about their operations or if we think that it is a good daycare or a bad daycare. It's just a special use permit. I actually agree with one of the speakers, you know, if we, if we tied it to a tax incentive, I bet we would get more people to sign up and, and say, hey, we have home daycares here. Right now, there's no benefit. It's the ordinance, and they do the best, but, best that they can. But should be advertised more, and maybe we can do that. The, the, the data, I appreciate the, the police department doing that. I understand that, that the data, there might be some holes in this, but, but I also have some subjective data. I, I spoke, I had a, maybe ten, fifteen-minute conversation with a neighbor in the middle of the intersection of Nineteenth and Choctaw, Choctaw for about fifteen, eighteen minutes, and not once did I fear for my life. Not once did a car drive by, and this was four, four-thirty. I think I, I saw three cars. I went and talked. There were a couple of neighbors that were out, two neighbors to the north, I believe. And then I asked one neighbor how many times she had somebody block her in. She said, never happened. And I asked her if, since the daycare came in, if there was, if she noticed an increase in traffic, and she said, not at all. And that it was, that she really liked what they were doing and thought it ran pretty well. The neighbor directly next door, I, I think, I didn't measure it, but there's like a, maybe a little three-foot grass separation between the driveways, not enough to park a car. But even he said that there hasn't been any problems with cars blocking his driveway in the mornings or in the afternoons. I, on a, a couple of different times in the mornings and then in the evenings, just went and parked in different areas myself just to see the traffic. I was visible some, some I wasn't. I, I didn't see anything. I, I see things that are a lot more dangerous out my way behind Henry Leavenworth than, than I see, than I see there. So, you know, that plus this data, that's what I'm using to consider. I wanted to share that with the rest of the board.
The only, the only comment I have is about the appraisals, and the county uses a percentage, and it's not always sales, and.
But everybody increased fourteen percent.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, that's an average, but some went up more. And because twenty-two to twenty-three, the interest rates were lower, so the values were higher. Now, if they go back after twenty-three, after we've been in twenty-three for a while, those values won't be as high. And, and, and that's fine. And I don't worry about that. The only thing that I think some of the people are worried about is the factor in an appraisal is you do it three ways. Cost approach, direct sales approach, and income approach. On the cost approach, you look at three different kinds of depreciation. Age-life depreciation is one. Functional obsolescence is another one, and the third one is economic obsolescence, which is something outside your property causing loss in value to your property. Now, I know the county doesn't do that, and, but.
And would you have to show proof of loss?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you prove?
You can do it.
How?
Well, if you want me to give you a whole class on it, I'll give it to you.
I don't want, don't.
I've done it. I've done, I can approve it to. But I'm just saying, that's a comment, that's a perspective that these neighbors are looking at.
Sure.
Not that it's true or whatever, but that's a possibility. I don't have any more things to say, and so, what is our? Anybody else have anything else to say?
Yeah, if you have more to say, I have a motion.
So, it sounds like to me, I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting. I was out of town. But obviously, one of the central issues that I think is of concern of the residents is the traffic issue. And while I actually agree that the traffic study is not valid because there are four hours for two weeks that have absolutely no traffic, I think there is enough information still to be able to make an informed decision. I think that traffic issues have been mitigated with the things that the owners are doing with the cones and talking to the parents and letting them know that the rest of the neighborhood has concerns about the speed limits. And I would, I encourage you to continue to have those conversations periodically, particularly when you have new parents come in. Make sure that they, they understand that their neighbors, your neighbors, are concerned about the traffic and the speed limits, and for them to be mindful of that and respectful of your neighbors. The other concerns about home values and process, I think, have all been addressed in my mind so far in this meeting and what I read from the previous meeting as well.
I do have a call.
Anybody else?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit as.
Recommend approval?
Recommend, recommend, yes. Recommend approval to the city commission for the special use permit for the address. Do I, do I need to?
Nineteen thirteen.
Yeah, nineteen thirteen Choctaw. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first by Brian and a second by Kim. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign?
No.
No. We have a, we have a majority. Motion passes. The chairman can only vote once in a time.
We didn't have the last one, so we got it recorded. Okay, and then just for everyone's information, this will go to the January ninth city commission for first consideration ordinance.
And public comment is allowed during that time, correct?
They, it is not a public hearing at the city commission meeting. Generally, the city commissioners, if they know there are folks in the audience wishing to speak, kind of like tonight, they'll go ahead and take comment, but it is not a public hearing.
Okay, good. So, any, I just put that out there. Any citizen that feels that they, their voice has not been heard and you have new information, I would recommend that you contact your city commission, one of the city commissioners, since they'll be voting on this next. That's the, the next place to, to go. So, if you have any questions or need more input.
And there will be some new city commissioners in January.
We just had one new city commissioner elected.
Just holidays.
You do have to sign up ahead of time. It's not like here where you can just speak either. You do have to.
That's, that's for the open comment period.
The city commission.
Yeah, yeah, the city commission. When, when it's related to an item, again, since it's not a public hearing, they'll generally take comments if they know folks are interested in speaking, but you don't have to sign up ahead of time for the individual items.
Anything else?
So, we don't have any other items on the agenda. Again, we do have a January meeting. That'll be January eighth after the first of the year. And so, we will see hopefully all of you then.
Happy holidays to everyone. Meeting in June. Thank you.
That scares me every time. Hey, yes.